My name is Louise Chiawe Dun. And I would like to welcome all the new members to this wonderful town hall meeting for Global Corp Zambia. Good to see you all. Thank you for coming. And we are here to welcome you and to enlighten you on what we are doing so far as Global Corp. The first thing that I would like to do is to go straight into opening remarks because of time limitations. I'm going to give the floor to my co-chair, marketing, and also our board member, Ms. Patricia Kamanga. It's over to you, madam. Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Patricia, and I just want to thank each and every one of us that is here today as a new member for this grand opening. We should all know that we're here for a purpose. And for some of us, yes, it's our, our bond with our retirement packages. But people have invested depending on what they want to see with the money they're investing. But one thing we should all be happy about is that the coupon that you've invested in is the only coupon that I've known. Once you invest, that pays you back what you invested your money into. So this is why we're excited, because we invested in something and we're getting paid something back, which no bank will give us here or in Zambia. So we just want to thank each and every one of us that invested in this. And we look forward for each one of us to at least bring a member each, because there's power in numbers. Once we get to 500, we'll be able to do huge, 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 huge things in Zambia. We could have one day our own bank, you know, with a global logo on, global bank. We could have a hospital. We could have a mine. These are the things that we should all see ourselves getting into. And maybe I'm foreseeing this maybe in the next one year or end of this year. I'm sure something fruitful is coming out of this. Thank you again for all of you and for joining us in this meeting.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kamanga. My screen is freezing. I hope you can all hear me. Thank you so much for those remarks. I really appreciate it. As you have heard, the first thing that we are celebrating as an entity is the first coupon payment. We are so proud. This is a testimony of what Global has been able to do and deliver to the Zambians as never seen before. We are a trusted and integral part of the Zambian community now, and we are going forward doing bigger things. So we welcome new, new members and we would like you to join this, this, this very, very august entity. The next thing on the program is for me to introduce the finance, the head of finance, and to understand the interest payment statement. So this is what is going to be explained to you now. I'd like to introduce to the floor Mr. Elias Munguala. Thank you so much. Over to you, Mr. Munguala.
Thanks, Ms. Louise. As a way of introduction, I'm Elias Munguala, the treasurer of the Global Corp. As everyone has said, we are going to actually look at understanding the, um, the statement that was sent to our members. If I could see, if I could share this. Let's see. Is everyone able to see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I've introduced myself and I'll just run through quickly, because there are other sections that I've just combined, um, the presentation. So the first thing I just want to say is that, as everyone said, we have an investment goal, which we want to raise the amount of 20 million or $1 million. So far, we have raised 5.5 million, which is a central bank in GRS bonds with that first value of 6.4 million. So those are the months that we've spent and the number of investors that have participated on a monthly basis. You could see that from the, um, the table there. I'll move on quickly to explain the statement that we have received. But I'll just start quickly by looking at each aspect of the statement. I'll come to these new members at a later stage. I'll skip it for now. So let's talk about the, um, the statement that we received. The statement that we received, we get an advice note from Central Bank, which they tell us the cut-off price. The cut-off price is the rate at which, uh, the, um, the Bank of Zambia buys every hundred quacha that you invest in government bonds. So for the July, uh, statement that we issued, the cut-off rate was 86.1553. So I just put up the slides to show you, and the coupon rate was at 9%. The next slide shows you the advice note, which the amount of money that we invested of 1.7, 1.8 million and at the, at 2.85. So the cost was 1,796, which was taken from, um, our bank account. So just to mention that, I know there could be experts here who are no financial matters, but I'll be very, very basic. So Bank of Zambia offers the GRS bonds in multiples of 5,000 with a minimum of half a million, 500,000 quacha. So if you could see that, we exceeded the 500,000 quacha and it's done in multiples of 5,000. We'll come to that. And this is why you could see they, they gave, they awarded us 2,850. So moving on to the other slide, which is now the main, um, presentation of this afternoon and evening, wherever you are. So for our members, we did put all the money together, which gave us over 2 million pounds. 2 million quacha, not pounds, where I'm in the UK. And so this amount of money we put together and we, the Bank of Zambia gave us the, um, the cut-off price that you saw there. And we worked prorata based on that information that we got from Central Bank. So for the people that put in 20,000, for example, the amount that was, uh, was the cost price was 19,514, which was debited to our stomach bank based on that cut-off price of, um, 86.1553. The next amount, there was a difference of 455, which was obviously carried forward to the following month, because at the beginning, we didn't know exactly how we should work with those figures. But that clearly shows that out of the 20,000, 19.5 K was invested. What is the first value? You could see the explanation there. The first value is the amount invested at Bank of Zambia award rate, which is 86.5. So the way it's calculated is, um, that 19,514 multiplied by 100 divided by 86.1553, which gives you a total of 22650 as the first, um, value of the, the, the investment that you've put in. Then you've got the discount value paid on maturity. This is the difference between the 22,000 and the 19,514 that will be paid the total on, on maturity. Now, there's a coupon rate for two years, which is giving us 4,000. There, you could see the 4,000. The coupon rate is calculated, uh, the coupon payment, sorry, is calculated at a coupon rate, um, which...
Sorry.
Sorry about that. Um, our finance manager seems to be having network issues. Okay. Can you please unmute your, your, your mic, Mr. Munguala? Unmute your mic, Mr. Munguala? Apologies about that, ladies and gentlemen. Just give us a minute.
Am I okay now?
Okay.
Okay. Let me... Sorry about that. I'll just go back to my... We lost the presentation now. I need to get it back. Okay. Are we? Yeah. Can you see the presentation? Yeah. Okay. Sorry about that. So as I was saying, um, we, we were talking about the coupon payment on maturity. So this is more or less like the interest that you get at the end of the two-year tenure. Remember, this investment, uh, this amount was invested in July 2022, and the maturity is 2024. And we're going to be given that coupon rate, which is, um, uh, more or less like interest payment on the amount that we've invested. So in understanding the whole statement, at the end of that two-year maturity, we'll get 4,082 coupon payment and the discount amount of 3,03135. Then, um, obviously, we cannot avoid the 15% withholding tax, which we have to pay to the government plus 1% Bank of Zambia handling fee. All these amounts are only taken from the coupon payment, not from the discount, discounted amount. So, uh, at the end of, um, that period, the total amount on 20,000 as coupon payment will be 3,0429, paid every six months. So every six months, you get part of that money. In this particular case, the Global Corp, um, will take 2% as their handling fee for obviously managing other, um, aspects of this investment. So in a nutshell, the first payment for the July, which we, for the July bond, which we issued in January, was 842 quacha 618 way for a person who has invested. This is a fixed sum of money. The individual will be getting on, um, every six months. So four payments of 84268 will be issued. At the end of that two-year tenure, you get, um, your full amount of, the amount you invested plus the discount amount plus the coupon rate. And that's the good thing about, um, the bonds. I think I'll stop here if there are any questions. That is the basic summary of a statement. So you have 20,000, 19, cost value, 485 carried forward, first value, which is calculated, taking that figure, multiplying by 100 divided by the cut-off price, the coupon rate for 82, the discount amount 3135, and the taxes and your net pay. That's the summary. Are there any questions to, uh, to that before I just show you the next slide, which is just talking about, um, the payments that we've made? We've made payments to all the members that have provided bank details. And for those that have not provided bank details, you've not received this payment. There's an agreement that we made in the investment share agreement that everyone will have to be paid. Can I just also literate here that, um, everyone who is trading, um, in bonds, according, they should have at least a Zambian bank account where all these funds will be transferred to. Like the chair mentioned last time, it would be very difficult for us to, um, transfer money for those who've got foreign bank accounts. So it's, it's very important that we always open bank accounts in Zambia. This is why the last meeting, we had to invite somebody from Zanaco to give us an outline of how to open a DASPA account. So with regards to the statement, I think I, I'll stop here because there's so many presenters. The other part, how to become a member, I'll come and look at that at some other time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Munguala. Thank you so much for the presentation. Yeah, Mr. Chair.
There is a question. There is a question. There is a question for Mr. Munguala.
Go ahead.
All right. Ms. Kazeju, please go ahead with the question.
Good evening, everybody. This is Ms. Kazeju from Germany. A very nice presentation with such information. I don't think there will be no need of me making noise in the group wanting to know where we are going and everything, because it has been explained loud and clear. Just to make, um, um, a follow-up on the last one, which I didn't really understand. When you said, um, in the next, you, for example, this one I'm going to read, total net coupon payment after taxes at two years maturity paid on, in a eco installment. I hope it doesn't mean to say, in this two years' time, one is going to get back the money he invested or she invested and the interest and everything. The money just remains. We only get other interests. I kindly, I need guidance there. Thank you.
Yes, you are absolutely right. The investment amount will only be paid back to you at the end of the period. What you'll be getting are coupon payments, which is more or less like, I'll ask quite interest payment. But you'll be getting coupon payment in this case, for a person who invested, 20,000 will be getting 842 every six months. So we've paid one instrument. There are three instruments, which will be paid, um, in July, January 24 and July 24. So then, at the end, you'll get your money back plus the, um, the, the amount that you invested into the, um, the bonds.
Okay. Does it mean again, after we get back our money, we'll again reinvest? Is it, is it an ongoing reinvestment of bonds or it's just ending after these two years?
That's a very good question. The plan, the Global Corp plan is to, to invest into other projects. The GRS bond was, is just an investment vehicle. Like the chair, I'm sure. I don't want to go into the chair's presentation, but I think it's going to touch into that area. The bonds that we are doing, they're investment vehicles. Like you saw at the beginning of my presentation, is for us to raise that 20 million or $1 million. So that as a global corp, we can have a leverage whereby, for every investment that we want to go in. Right now, we are working on modalities to move into real estate and other aspects of projects. So that investment, once we have that money in the bank account, we use it as leverage and speak to the banks and say, "You guys, we've got this X amount of money as a team, as a global corp team, and then we want to do this kind of project. Would like to borrow X amount of money at this lower interest rate." Because these will act as, let me put it this way, as a collateral in some ways or the other. It's a financial collateral that are not a fixed asset collateral. So we could use that as a leverage and negotiate on that basis in order for us to get more money, maybe to put into real estate business. So that's just like one example of how we intend to do. So at the end of that period, should we be successful in those areas of investment? And we will continue, but it's not our priority. Our priority is to look at projects that will bring in more investment to you as our members. So we're working very hard to ensure that we are able to deliver on your behalf. So in, in a nutshell, this is a short term. But we will continue, in some cases, investing in that area. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. If there are any other questions to the finance chair, we can move on.
Ms. Susan? Ms. Susan has got the under.
Thank you. Susan, go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Hello, everybody. Again, thank you for this presentation. It really makes things very clear for us. I did have a question on that difference carry forward to August. Does that mean that that amount then was used to put into the next, like the August bond request was, is, is that what that means there?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. So it means that for those people that did it invest, for this particular, let's say, let's take this example. If somebody didn't add in more money into August, the person who have 485 quacha 19 in way in, in the month of August investment. But for those that have put in more money, let's say you put maybe another, maybe 5,000, you're gonna have 5,485 quacha 19 in way. So yes, it was carried forward, because we are all learning, this is new to us. At the very beginning, we wouldn't know the exact amount. Like the cut-off point is obviously provided by Bank of Zambia. We have no control of. For investment, for instance, investments that maybe would go for a period of 10 years, the cut-off rates are totally different depending on the number of years. So in, in short, yes, it was carried forward.
All right. Thank you.
We have another question from Brother Charles. He's asking a question. He says, "I am a member. If I decide to top up my investments, say in March, how do you treat the extra amount?" Over to you, Mr. Munguala.
So if you need to talk back, we invest on a monthly basis. Remember, um, we are doing bonds. We are not doing treasury bills. Treasury bills are done every two weeks. Government bonds are done on a monthly basis. So on each month, there's a deadline in which we need to submit, um, the letter of offer, the more or less like the application form to say we've got X amount, would like to invest. So that is done on a monthly basis. So if that amount of money you had to carry forward from previous month, it will be added together. So this is done on a monthly basis. I hope I've answered the question. Is that okay?
Brother Charles, have we answered your question?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, are there any other questions for the finance team? If there are no further questions, and maybe you can think of some later, we can move on.
I have a question.
For the questions. Oh, we have a question from Sylvia. Sylvia, go ahead with your question. Sylvia?
Ms. Sylvia says, "I understand all payments have been made. How long does it take to reflect in the bank? Uh, with bank, my bank is standing."
What happened was, we had the cut-off date. We are going to, we did make the first batch. For the month of, um, July payments, we had 57 members invested. I think we've issued payments about for 29 people, 28. Some of the bank details came a little bit later and we're working on those payments. They should go out by Monday. For those that have not received, everyone will receive unless you've not provided your bank details.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lined up, we have Ms. Melissa and Ms. Gettrude, who are lined up with their, with their questions. Ms. Melissa and Ms. Gettrude. Ms. Melissa, go first.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation. So I had a question. So I know the statement sort of gives all the information about how much somebody had invested in. However, that, um, that statement comes six months after the money has gone in. So I'll give an example. If I invested, let's say, 20,000, like you put on the chat, but out of the 20,000, because this is a group investment, Bank of Zambia has then a face value that gives you the exact amount that was invested. So then, uh, the, the remainder of my 20,000, that is not taken up in the month of, let's say, January, Global then takes that into the February investment pot. So I wondered whether there's a way that you can send to us statements to let us know that, let's say, for instance, in the month of December, I put in 500,000. But actually, out of that 500,000, only 350 was taken up as part of the whole pot of, of money. So that, uh, and then that's, the, the remained 150 then moved on to January. So that it kind of, when I'm now receiving the six-month statement, my expectations are already managed, that I'm not expecting, um, to see 500,000 as what I invested, but I'm expecting the 300,000, which I'd already seen in a previous statement. So I guess my, my, the what I'm trying to ask is, every time we put in money, is there possibility to generate a statement that says that I put in X amount, but based off of what Bank of Zambia took out, um, what is going to be carried forward for that particular month I put in is only, uh, a proportion of whatever it is that Bank of Zambia has charged? I don't know if I'm making sense.
Thanks. Yes, you are absolutely right, because all what you're saying is, if we don't, for instance, you invested 20,000, we don't, we don't invest the whole amount. We need to show you this on a statement to say, for this month, for the amount of money you put in, we only invested, like you mentioned in your example, 350, maybe out of 500. So you are right. We're supposed to be issuing, um, statements. We are a new organization trying to work on the IT systems, trying to look at which software packages. As soon as, um, I think I'll leave this to the IT and the chair. I think as soon as we get to, uh, to develop a kind of a software system and people will be able to log in and look at their investment portfolio and to see for, in the amount of money they put in, how much was invested for that particular month and how much was carried forward. But at this stage, um, we're a little bit manual. This is why we're encouraging members to, um, to pay subscription, to pay membership shares. We want to do more project to raise money, so that, as you are aware, IT system is not a cheap system. It's one of the expensive systems. So we are looking into that. And I don't know if I've got colleagues from IT or the chair who can contribute to that point regarding people seeing their statement.
Can I also, um, maybe before the others come in, I think let's stop saying that we are new, because we are not new. Otherwise, it might discourage people coming on board, because every time we'll keep hearing, "We are new, we are new." I think let's stop saying we are new. I think let's just say we have not yet developed to that extent. However, we are working on X mechanisms to ensure that we get to that space. At the moment, it's manual, and please bear with us. We will make, we, we will make this available at a particular given time. I think if we keep saying we are new, because we've been saying we are new for the last one year, we are no longer new.
Thanks, Ms. Melissa. Point taken. Definitely. Thank you for that gratification. I do apologize. We'll definitely work on a system that people will be able to to see this online. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I I can just uh a a small addition to that answer. Yes, uh, Miss Melissa, we are working uh on the uh good software. Something we are researching e- every day, uh, which will uh process our work just like a bank would do. Uh, we are looking like, we are looking at that, at that. Um. Right now, we have made the payments. Those people we we paid for July. Uh, we are not able to send you a a statement showing you uh this amount has been paid. So we are, we, it is twenty-four seven. We 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 will develop this, it's coming.
There are some more questions.
Yes, uh, Miss Gettrude and Mr. Fraser have a question.
Um. My son just sent, he's a new member. He just sent him his uh original two thousand six hundred quota. But he is not ready to send the initial twenty thousand investment. Is it possible that he can join in June? And what does he need to do to cling on to his membership until June, when he's able to invest his twenty thousand?
And when you pay the two thousand six hundred, you're already a member. The you you you're already a member of the Global Cooperative. And the investment is, you'd investment share, you don't also need to pay that twenty thousand at once. What we've been saying, you can spread across a a period or of time. So if somebody is as putting that two thousand six hundred and does not invest it, it doesn't mean you are not a member, you're still a member. But you've not just jumped on the GRZ bonds, that's what it means. But you enjoy all the other privileges like participating in projects, voting as a member, all those global cop activities, you'll be involved. The only thing is that you you've just not invested into the government bond. So you not lose, you not lose his membership at all.
Thank you. I think there's another question from somebody has raised his hands. Chairman, can you take that up?
Uh, can you hear me? It's Fraser Masheu.
Hi.
Very well, thank you. I I just wanted to contribute uh as a as a reaction to Madame Melissa's uh uh quest of saying that uh we should not say we are new. Yes, correct. However, in terms of the programs of uh these bonds, we are relatively new, and it is important. Uh transparency is there, even for the people that are joining. So that uh you create confidence from the people that you find who have already benefited from the same. And uh you cannot uh, we cannot afford to hoodwink anyone in believing that we know, we have more experience. Uh, any organization and any such, um, you know, uh, plans that we have takes a bit of time to take off, and those problems obviously have been noted. So it's important. Transparency is very cardinal in financial sector. And uh that develops confidence in the uh in the organization. And uh I must say, I haven't participated in the bond, but the way things are working is uh adds off to everyone. And uh I just wanted to say, congratulations, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for the compliment.
Thank you so much. All right, so it's getting very hot in here. I hope everybody's heating up and we're getting very excited. Um. If there are no other questions, and if you if you have questions, uh, we can still continue. Uh, we have two questions here. Can you talk about membership details? Yes, we're coming to that. And how does one join sees involved? We are just about to come to that. So we're just going to, uh, in fact, that will be our next presentation on marketing, so those questions will be answered. Uh, we're going to go over to Mr. Roger Charlie for time. Uh, he is not with us as usual, but Mr. Charlie will present, and of course, every question will be answered. Mr. Charlie, over to you.
All right. Thank you so much. I let me share my one slide. I just want to literally to one or two points on the statement, uh, interest statement which you you received. Uh, there was some information. Okay. Let me share that. Um, if I. All right. I just want to draw your attention uh to the statement uh once again. As a a group, we received.
I don't know what's wrong with the.
One of the, one of the.
Can somebody please mute their mic?
Court chairs, just uh uh mute everyone, and that will help, and then we'll ask. Right. Thank you. So as as a group, we received almost eighty thousand in coupon payment from Bank of Zambia. Okay, apologies for that. Let me make you, you are adding, can you mute everyone? Sorry for that. So on the statement, um, there is the seventy-nine thousand. This is the total we received as a group uh in interest. I I just want to talk about this uh showing, I I think, one, the power of bonds and the power of of numbers. This ca- this came from fifty-seven investors. These are the people who invested in the month of July. So we were able to generate about eighty thousand uh quacha. Um. While our money is still seated in in the bank, uh, we 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 made this money, so to say, as they say, while sleeping. This money was the was being made. If you look at this amount also, it is telling us, uh, we have a lot of members who are saying, I want to do invest my my interest. I want to reinvest my interest. The big project the treasurer uh talked about probably will come uh right about uh this number you are looking at here. No bank manager under this time uh in Zambia or anywhere is going to refuse when they see us. We are producing about, you know, hundred thousand in um in payment in interest. This is not money like coming from our pocket. We have invested once, but we are generating month after month. And and this is a, it's going to be very, very critical. I say this because we want to encourage a lot of our members. If you have family, if you have, especially those in 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 the diaspora, yourselves, you are doubting whether we can, we can do this. Yes, yes, we can, we can do this. The seventy, the seventy-nine thousand which has come, eighty thousand which has come, and all of you wants to invest. Zanaco manager, Stan Big manager will give us a hearing when they start to see these kinds of returns coming and being reinvested. So it will make it very, very easy for us to do other projects which we we are, we are looking at. We are going to look at um the projects later on, uh, but I I wanted to underscore that as a group, fifty-seven people were able to manage to bring in fifty thousand, uh, seventy-nine, seventy-nine thousand. The next figure uh is fifty-six. The fifty-six you see there is the withholding tax. This is the tax we have paid the government of Zambia. Uh, Globo is the main, we have members of, uh, in the homeland, we have uh members here. But it is mainly members of the diaspora. I say be proud as a member of diaspora. You, for the first time, okay, not first time, because we are sending money almost all the time, that is the form of tax. But this one is directly, we have sent fifty-six thousand to the government of Zambia uh in the coffers of the government of Zambia. What does that mean? If a taxpayer here, where I am in Canada, you're a taxpayer in America, people make noise. Why? Because they pay taxes. So as the, as we move on, ladies and gentlemen, eh, we are now giving ourselves a very, very strong voice. We can speak up in our nation with confidence. I end there. I'll come back with the project. And those are the two items. Um, there's one or two I wanted to share, but my math didn't work out very good. But I I I just want to iterate. Imagine if eh eh uh uh seventy-nine thousand could be uh could be could they return from fifty-seven people? Imagine the day we are going to be one thousand. Imagine what is going to happen. It's going to be huge. We are going to be doing, I think, two or three product uh projects at a go. If one thousand can come. So those who are already members here, please, in the month of August, bring one member, in the month of February. Bring one member to the global. Let's grow this uh global to one thousand, uh, one thousand members by the end of December. And you will see how that money is going to grow, while our principal amount, which we have invested, is seated. This is just a loose chain, so to say. It is coming. Uh, thank you so much for that.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, uh, for that presentation, for that word of encouragement. Uh, we are going to move on with the program, and we are going to go over with the uh marketing, which will probably answer the questions that I've been seeing here regarding uh membership and so forth. You can see, there's a table, if you go in the chat, uh, some of you have seen it, others probably haven't, it's on the Telegram uh group. Uh, how to join Global? What is the procedure? So what marketing does um is basically, we 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 give you a a script. First of all, we have what we call a Telegram group. And uh in that group, we have quite a number of members, of which we have been, um, you know, uh, recruiting and putting them to the Telegram group. We have a global multipurpose co-op uh group on Telegram. And on that Telegram, there are over three hundred members who have not yet signed up, are still on the fence. Uh, we have recruited maybe uh a a number of them from that group already. So we are probably over a hundred and twenty, correct me if I'm wrong, Mister Mister Chairman, right now fully paid up members. But uh we want all the three hundred people to come on board, because Global is about leveraging. It's about numbers. The more we grow, the more we can get uh clout to be able to do capital projects and have streams of income coming in to benefit the members. The good thing about it is that the terrain that we are on right now in Zambia is very ripe for investment. It's very ripe for you and me to do a lot of things. When you belong to a bigger entity, then you have more leverage to go in with what you want to do as a global member now. You can walk into any bank like Standby right now. If you say you're a member of Global, trust me, you're going to be given a personal banker with a click of a hand. You're going to be given uh red carpet treatment, because money speaks and money does walk the talk. So this is what we want to do. We are recruiting heavily, and we are recruit, we are recruiting rapidly, because we are legitimate. We're a force to reckon with, and we are, we are a Zambian entity that uh is integral in in our approach. So what we do is, we're recruiting from the Telegram group, trying to get all the members on board. Basically, we will go one-on-one on each member, will come to you personally. We will want to have a one-on-one chat with you, so our marketing team will engage you. You know, if you have time, we schedule a meeting, we talk to you, we start explaining what Global is about. And from there on, we um introduce you to some of the, you know, the 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 membership registration is a hundred quacha. Uh, subscription annual is five hundred quacha. And then, of course, there's the two thousand, uh, the two hundred quacha uh for ten shares for the minimum investment in in the in the government bonds, which it is your choice to do or 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 not. You know, it's up to you. We we don't force people to become an investor, but we do encourage you to become an investor, because then you have leverage. You have something that you can look forward to, you know, for retirement, for your children. This is what uh the Caucasian people do. This is what Indians do. This is what other people who are very money-minded do. They save for future. They look at the longevity instead of looking at the short term. So this is where we are going, and um we actually have brought you here, because now we are orienting you. We hope and pray that after this meeting, most of you will sign up. You have seen the benefits of being a member. You have seen the testimony and the results of being a member. So we hope that after this meeting, you will sign up. We usually uh take the member from Telegram, we onboard them onto another forum where we will, you know, welcome you, will make you feel at home. And then we start explaining uh the products that we have and convince you. And after this meeting, we hope that some of you are on that forum, will be able to sign up, so that we can go straight into the members forum, where you will now be a participating member, you have full voting rights. You are able to suggest, uh, you know, on on projects, what projects you want to see happen. Um, on the Zambian terrain, there's so much happening, solar mining, uh, microfinance, there's so much that we can go into. Um, we were in Zambia two weeks ago, and I say we, our chairman was in Zambia representing Global about a month ago, and uh State House invited him. See, so when you have the power of leverage, everybody hears about it, that there's this new entity on the on the horizon. Who are they? He did a presentation, though, very impressed, so it got a lot of support uh from 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 Zambian entities uh into what we are doing. Uh, we also have um a chance to to do a lot of other things, like real estate, you know, uh, do our own uh product marketing with our own logo and things like that. These are just suggestions that we are throwing out there. So become a member, fully participate, you know, bring in your relatives, bring in your friends, and um see what Global can do in your life, you know? Um, what else can I say? I I I don't know if there are any other questions, maybe my court chair, uh, Miss Patricia Kamanga can pitch in um on this one. Thank you so much. Miss Kamanga. Patricia, are you there?
Uh, no.
Okay, so if there are any other questions.
Sorry, I was think, I think I went on mute. Um, you, well, you know. I didn't tell you, Miss Louise.
Yes, I'm just saying, over to you. I I ended up by saying, uh, you know, the beauty of becoming a member, they can participate in uh voting rights. Um, then there's the streams of income that are coming, the participation on capital projects. Um, you know, and I wanted you to add on 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 what we are doing as marketing, the Facebook, the Co-op Members Forum, and all the other things that we are trying to achieve as as marketing.
Okay, um, that that a good thing is, you know, when you're in, um, when you're a new member, I would like to encourage you, please do not shy away from asking. If there's any question that you, you know, you know that you're, you would want an answer, to just reach out and we'll we'll actually answer you, and maybe we have a meeting. I normally call people one-to-one if you ask a question. We'll call you and, you know, just run you through whatever you want to know, instead of you just keeping away and thinking, no, you want to invest in them. Um, they're global now, because when you're a member, we are encouraging you to pay the two thousand shares. Reason being, whatever we're doing as a cooperative, we're doing it together. The benefits are going to be um shared out equally once you're a cooperative. So we are encouraging each one of us to pay up the membership and also to invest in the shares. If there's a problem with the form, some people are saying they don't know how to upload the forms. We have the finance team or the marketing, um, these people can um run you through or help you um with whatever problem you are facing. This is what I wanted to add, and there's really power in numbers. And as my colleague said, we thank you all, you know, for being there and for coming into the onboarding. Wanted the onboarding, also encouraging those which we put in the Global Onboarding to pay the membership so that you can graduate and come onto the main chat. We don't want to leave you there for too long, because we have to, you know, always um add new people. Because we can't be explaining to ten people and they're still there. It's better we explain um the Global, the functions in smaller groups. So if I've turned today, you don't graduate, adding onto the number. So that's why we're encouraging each one of us to please pay uh once in the onboarding group. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Um, I would also like to mention here eh, there was one lady who asked about eh, we should not say we are new. I totally thank you for that comment because it comes to mind eh a point of reference, which is, we are a cooperative. The key word is a cooperative. It's a multipurpose cooperative, which you are participants. We are not going to say that you as members are going to sit on the fence and eh look to the leaders. There are no leaders. You are now a leader. Once you become a member, you are part of the, of the society. We value your input. There's nobody here who's going to shut you down. You're not gagged, you're not muzzled. You are free to speak. We really value your input. We value your skills. There are a lot of you who are even more um, um, how can I say, more skilled, more conversant in all these different departments. We need people in marketing, we need people to help the chairman, we need people to, to help finance, we need people to, to, to help in IT tech. We are trying to streamline operations right now. We are trying to automate operations and we need skilled people who are even better than us. We're not saying we are better than anyone because we are not. There are things that you are able to tell us that, that we can input into this entity and even make it more viable. So with you just sitting there and not participating, then it makes it more difficult for us to also function. First of all, I would like to also reiterate that most of the people that are working for this eh global eh enterprise are volunteers. We are not on a salary. We are not paid. We are not complaining because we moved at this project because we knew that it was going to work for the benefit of the Zambians. And we wanted to make it eh eh a testimony to the fact that Zambians can work together united in tandem, in the same mindset, to do something tangible and great. We want to supersede even corporations like Glencore and all these foreign entities that flood our mining. We, we complain as Zambians and say, oh, they are taking our mines, they are taking our cobalt. Oh, my goodness, how are we going to? This is the way we are going to interject. We are going to sit at the same table with those giants one day and we're going to say, now we've arrived. And you are going to be part of the process. So you need to jump on board. You need to join these departments. We'll be very, very happy to see a lot of people here, fifteen people, twenty people sign up going to finance to help Mister Munguala, going to help Miss Kamanga there, going to help the chairman to streamline operations and make this entity more viable. So we expect some participation from today. Thank you so much. Um, the next item, if there are no questions.
Stella has a question.
Four questions here.
Hi. He- hello, can you hear me?
Hello, Miss Stella.
Hi, yeah. Stella Banda here. I'm a member and I'm also an investor. I don't regret at all being part of the, the team here that is trying to make a better life for myself, Zambians and the world at large. At the end of the day, because our money is being circulated in so many areas. Now, to the new members here or those aspiring candidates that want to join, I'm coming here today. Normally, I don't talk, I just listen because I want to encourage you as I encourage myself. Today, I watched a video from Zambia's on Facebook somewhere. Zambia's complaining on how foreigners, they mentioned Nigerians, they're taking our mines. Do you know why they are doing that? We are slow to act. A Nigerian will hear about a product, it doesn't matter whether it's in Zambia, it's in Europe, wherever it is, they'll run with it and take a risk. We as Zambians here given this opportunity wide openly. Can we act fast? Can we beat those that want to beat us? Let's be the giants for once, more especially in our own country. Let's fight through this. Don't even hesitate to say, well, is this working, is this not working? While other nations are jumping into our country and taking our minds, taking all the opportunities that we have as Zambians. I'll leave you with this question. Are you in or are you out? Have a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that eh lovely comment and for that encouragement. Um.
There was another question. Yeah. Another question.
Hello, I also have my hand up. I don't know if it's on screen.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, eh, this slide is not showing. Eh, what is at the bottom? Before I give a contribution, just wanted to see the last line. It's been cut. If it can be moved.
Eh.
Involved in research into future prospective capital projects, I think.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I think my, my question has been answered. I was looking for how to contact, to contact the, the admins because I do facilitation in projects. I'm based in Italy. And my contribution when it comes to encouragement, here where you've written encourage participation of members, I think the projects for our country and I'm into development cooperation. My, my eh contribution could be linking, linking the, the global, oh my God, the eh global cooperative to them um, what can I call it? It's um, it's some, some funds, some, some funds for capacity building in innovation, like um the IT. This I can do. My name is Maria Chilas, if I can be contacted, yeah.
That's good news.
Okay.
Um, excuse. Miss Maria, could we? Could you, my name is Louise Chia. We're done. Could we please eh eh talk to each other after the meeting? And that would, that is very welcome. Thank you so much for your contribution.
With pleasure, with pleasure.
Thank you.
I think we don't have any more questions.
Thank you so much. Um, from this point on, eh, again, if there are any other questions, please feel free to write in the chat and we will answer all your questions. We will move on to the IT team eh represented by, um, I think it's Mister Darius Mulenga. I'm not sure. Over to you, um, Mister Chair.
Yeah, he's not here. Eh, eh, we have a very competent member there. I think eh, brother, they can say one or two things eh about what eh the IT team is doing and eh, yeah. How you can be eh 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 a member of the, the IT team.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister, Mister Mulenga, unfortunately, Mister Mulenga is attending a funeral. He wasn't able to be here today. But I'll just say one of, for those of you that are looking, I just posted the link to application in the chat room. You can go to the website and go to the accounts tab. That's where you find the eh, the application. Grant application. Um, we also have eh a tech email for those of you, the new members. If you want to contact the tech team, there's an email eh for the tech team that you might post in eh, I think it's posted on the WhatsApp group. Eh, we post that. That's where you can send, or you can, in case you are having trouble with logging in and things like uploading documents, you can send them to that email. The finance team also have their own email that, a question regarding finance issues, you can send them to the finance team, to the treasurer. And then we have a general email for general questions. So we have the info at the Global Co. Zambia. You can use that email to send questions that are, that are general questions. Yeah, people that you, you'll be answering. All those emails that I, I have posted in the WhatsApp groups. Eh, and that's all I think I have to say for, on behalf of Mister Mulenga. I didn't get the notes from him. I thought he'd be here. Unless there are other que, any question? And for Miss Ma, Miss Maria, the one that spoke, like Miss Louise said, I think we welcome you very much. I think once we get in touch with Miss Louise, we'd love to hear from you, especially the IT eh eh IT eh aspect. We want to hear what you have and how we can work together with you with the IT eh. Trying to streamline our operations and you'll be, I think, be our assistants if you can come and eh work with you. Eh, once you talk with Miss Louise, I think she will brief the I eh IT team and then we can move from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'll add on eh to Miss Maria's eh 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 comment as well. Eh, as a cooperative, eh people will know eh the advan, one of the advantages is we are allowed to receive grants. Um, eh she used a specific word, eh, I've forgotten. Eh, we, we are allowed to use the eh, to, to use some grants. Um, especially, Miss Maria, in the eh IT, we are eh, we need some quite serious money. Um, some of the projects we are talking about is a credit union. If we have to run that, we need some very sophisticated software to, to handle that kind of way. So your sentiments are very, very welcome. Eh, one of the application we are applying, we, we asking is a member who knows how to write grants. Eh, so you're coming forward in that way, Miss Louise, I think we'll be talking to you. So thank you so much. And once again, over to you, Miss Louise. There's no other question. We can go to the next presenter.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, could eh, eh my co-moderator, Miss Kamanga, could you just post the global email for anyone who, like Miss Maria, would like to communicate with Global? Um, thank you so much. Can you please post that on the chat? Our next eh presentation is coming from eh projects and our counterpart, Miss Gilak Shimbah. She's not too well. Eh, we wish her well. Um, we would like that to be done by our chairman. Thank you so much. Over to you, Mister Chair, on projects.
All right. Eh. The screenshot is loading. Okay, you can see that. But why is my screen not? Okay, there we go. Eh, you got you. Projects. So project is hiring. Eh, we, we, we need a lot of people eh in this eh, in this area. Um. We receive membership funds from the members, two thousand. Eh, someone talked about eh the, the membership. That two thousand is eh our short-term working capital, so to say, we call it. We don't want to sit on that money, just sit it in the bank. I, I think you, eh, anyone can say, I can do better with my money than putting it in the bank. So we would like that money to be generating some funds, short-term. Um, we have, like we have said in previous meetings, we have eh bills to pay. Eh, eh, we have an investment advisor who is registered with eh SEC. Eh, we are not required as a cooperative to register here, but because we are handling people's money, we thought it was wise for us to have an investment advisor. Eh, that way, if the SEC calls on us eh, he can stand on our behalf and explain. We also have eh a lawyer. All these people, we pay them. Eh, the investment advisor, we pay him a month. The lawyer, we pay him eh as, as required, as needed. We also are paying for our software, so software. But as you heard, we are planning to acquire eh a better, a better system. So we, we, we are going to need money. We don't want to be coming to the members, oh, there is this project, please pay up. Well, there's this project, please pay up. We want to be using that money eh spinning it around so we can generate some more funds. So that's it. We have short-term projects eh in the eh eh in the project team. Short-term projects we are looking at and long-term projects. We are looking at eh an online store. An online store is something where we can sell eh global caps, eh global T-shirts eh which you, our members can, can buy and in return, we can eh generate some, some funds. Eh, last eh month, someone brought an idea of a remittance up. Eh, we are paying close to three million dollars eh as Zambians, as we send money to Zambia in the upper, in, in the remittance fees. Question is, why don't we tap into this money ourselves and keep this money? Um, eh global goal is to raise a million dollars. Here is our million seated right in our, in our eyes. So we want to pursue this very, very aggressively eh to have our own remittance, remittance up. Eh, and there are other short-term projects which you can think of. Eh, people can remember here, we did one time a beef project where we provided, we bought some beef from, for friends and family back, back on. Eh, we made a profit. Christmas time, we did um eh a Christmas hamba. Eh, the cooperative made some money. We gave some food to families. We also eh 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 donated some stuff to UTH and some blankets. So we are looking for short-term projects. So if you are eager, you want to be part of the project team, please let us know. Let me know. I'll, I'll, I'll forward you to eh Miss Sheila. She eh eh put you eh eh in, into a specific area where you think you, you can, you can create. Long-term projects. So again, if you are in real estate, you know this very well, you want to join eh this sector for planning purposes and even for execution. Real estate is one of our projects, our long-term project eh in the next eh two to five years. Eh, like someone said, we are tired of hearing, oh, the, the Kenyans have done this. Eh, eh, this time it is the Zambians are building and they are building big. Eh, trust me, we, we are building big. Eh, Bank of Zambia actually has told us themselves, you guys consider having a credit union bank? And yes, we, 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 we are considering that eh even in micro financing to, to, to bring in some money. Eh, we have food processing. Some of our members, they want to go in food, eh product, processing. If you are like me, who comes from northwestern province, oh, not even northwestern province, if you are Zambian and you see how much we have lost in the living from the mines. This is why we started accessing Global. We want to counterattack. We want to be part of the wealth, God-given wealth in our, in our nation. So let's join hands. One of these days, Global is going to own a mine. We are going to own a portion of the God-given wealth, God, God has given us. This is why we are doing this. So again eh, welcome aboard if you want to join the project, the projects team. Eh, also, there was the outcry last month. Eh, Lord Shading came back and everyone was, we, we all went, we didn't like it. Eh, Global is also considering to have a plant in eh solar, solar project. And there are other more projects to come. So if you are interested, you are a new member or you are an old member, you are just seated, um, you want to eh 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 participate in what we are doing, eh please feel free to, to, to join us, to join eh eh the, the, the project, the projects team and we'll put you into the, into the right, the right category. All right. Eh, I don't know if you have any questions for for projects team?
There's three questions in the chat. There's three questions from um, I can't see the name. Um, Fraser Mushiwwe, I think, and eh, yes, thank you, Mister Mushiwwe. Over to you. You are free to ask your question.
Oh dear, eh, this is okay.
You want to clarify?
Or maybe you didn't drop, you didn't drop your hand. They laughed the first time you raised your hand.
No, 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 eh, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, we can hear you, right.
Okay, okay. No, no, it, it was just eh, because I mean eh, this is the first time I'm attending this Zoom call. Eh, I shouldn't attend it, but eh I have, I think, one or two. Eh, I've, I've one or two people that I've invited and also for my own good, to understand the, the membership aspect of it. Eh, because I thought five hundred kwaacha was eh new, but eh, Mr. Mulenga, when he was presenting the treasury, he spoke of the two thousand six hundred and eh Miss Louise also spoke about a two thousand kwaacha. So I just want to understand eh what the membership is and eh how much for us to pay and the various eh amounts to be paid for different programs.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You, eh, eh, allow us to go. Yeah, allow us to go with the program. I'm going to bring in eh eh a small chat which shows eh a screen which shows eh how to become a member and eh investment as the next presenter is eh presenting. We'll show a chat, we'll show a chat here. It will be less confusing that, that way. Thank you. Thank you, Alfred.
So the next item eh, Mister Mushiwwe, we are not forgetting.
Did you say we have the other question? Did we say another question?
No, there's no.
No, another person there. All right.
Yeah, I think over to Legal and then we can eh attend. Yeah, I think over to Legal, and then we can attend to the last question. Legal, who is presenting? I think it's Mr. Derek.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, my name is Derek, by introducing myself, my name is Derek. Normally in the background, because of the nature of the team that I belong to, is I'm part of the legal team. We are more of a support team, our role is that of supervisor in nature, because we are not front and center like the finance, marketing and IT are. We were during the formation, I think the interim team of Dr. Redby, Dr. Manda, did most of the heavy lifting. Right now, what we do is support away to the other teams. For instance, we have to ensure that marketing, they abide by the copyright laws, the material that they are using, they are not infringing on the other copyright. The finance team, they abide by the Financial Intelligence Centre's requirements, rules and regulations. The IT, we have to ensure that look at the privacy of the information that you give us. You give us your personal information, so we have to ensure that it is private. And then we also have to look at what audit controls they have been placed in our systems or the platforms that we are using, so that we have controls and people have access and that your information is protected. But also, we have bylaws. We, as the legal team, we have to know the bylaws and make sure that the cooperative operates by and abide by the bylaws. And I would say, as a result, I'd like to encourage you as new members to go and look at the bylaws. We are working on putting those on the website. We are also trying to put there an audio version there, so that you can either just go and listen, because it's a long document. And if you don't have time, you can just jump with sections and headings, you can just jump the headings if you have a question and go and read. It explains most of these questions that are being asked in our social media platforms. If you read the, you went to the bylaws, you would have those questions answered. But also, we also look at compliance, our compliance with, like I said, the Financial Intelligence Centre, money laundering. We are required to let our members abide by those. Those are requirements that we have. But there's also, you can also go to the, we have some questions on the website, that frequently asked questions, you can go there. We are working with the tech team, so that they can enable those. But we also do research on the things that the cooperative is doing. We go and research what legal implications are there, that's part of our lead. But all I know, like the chairman already mentioned, the technical aspects of the legal aspects, those are handled by our lawyer. We have a lawyer, an attorney, depending on where you are in Zambia, who handles the technical aspects. And us, we just do more of the advisory work to the cooperative. All in all, that's all. Final thing that I would like to say, if there are people, new members that are in the legal profession, you are welcome to join us. We are looking for people to join our team, so that you can help us in interpreting the laws, the Zambian laws that are pertaining to operations of the cooperative. And that's to be my final appeal, that's my presentation from the legal team.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chivulu. We're very, very happy to have your competency and your team on board with us. We really value our leaders. So that being said, I don't know if we have something like a video or something that we want to play? Or does the chairman want to list the board of directors? So that everybody can know who to contact and that kind of thing. Over to you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Chivulu.
I have a video ready, the gentleman is ready, I'll do after the chairman.
Alright. To Ms. Wais, the question. So here is the how to become a member. These are the fees which we charge. We have 100 quacha, which is the application fee. They cover the cost of membership assessment. Distribution, meaning, do you get a profit out of it? No? Yeah, that's the way it is. 500 annual membership. This cover the administrative costs, the legal, the legal fees, the IT and stuff like that. Again, here, there's no distribution. Now, where it becomes interesting, for you to be a member, for you to be a member, to be able to invest in any of our portfolios, you first have to become a member of the cooperative. You have to buy 10 membership shares, which are sold at 200 quacha each. And these are mandatory. You cannot buy any more or less. They are just cooperative, cooperative shares. This allows you to become a cooperative member or owner of the cooperative. You have the rights to vote. If one day you want to be chair or you have to be a member, right? To vote, run to run for both positions. You enjoy the cooperative services. One of the things we are discussing, like Ms. Louise was saying, we might go to the bank and negotiate a better interest rate for our savings. Our members will be able to enjoy that. If you are a member, you'll be able to enjoy that service. Or maybe we are building, we go to Chilanga and we negotiate a good price for cement. Again, if you are a member of Global, you will be able to enjoy the benefits of being a member. So there are several, 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 I think, benefits of being a member when you come together. There is a lot of things we are able to do. Now, on the 20,000, this one is not mandatory, as you can see, it's not mandatory. However, this is our foundation as Global. We cannot talk about starting a credit union bank or starting a real estate with no money. So we said, "Let's pull some money together." So instead of putting this money into a savings account, giving us 2%, we said, "Let's put our money into bonds." That is how we found ourselves into bonds, and bonds are paying very, very, very well. At the end of two years, we are going to come to the members. We will ask you a question. If you are happy with what you are doing, are you interested there is a real estate development coming up? Do you want to be part of that? Some of you are going to say, "No, I want to stay with the bonds." That is fine. But we are also pushing ourselves, I think, confidence-wise. We are getting confident as leaders. Yes, we can do this. We've made mistakes here and there, but at the end of the day, I think we are very proud of the product we are building. You, the members, are going to be confident in what we are doing. So that when we go to the next level, to do the high-risk investments, I think there's not going to be any doubt in your mind that we mean well as members of the diaspora, as a team, we mean well. So this is why we are encouraging people to invest in bonds. The minimum is 20,000. The maximum is as long as your pocket can take you. Trust me, in bonds, there is money to be made, that I can tell you. We have members who have invested, you know, 100,000, 250,000. If you look at the coupons, what they are getting, you will be, you'll be like, "Where have I been all this time? Where have I been?" But our minimum is 20,000. We are looking for 1,000 members. If we reach this amount, we believe, Ms. Wais, we can approach Africa Development Bank, we can approach any institution under the sun and show them our statement. They'll be able to give us 10 times the money we would be wishing to develop the money. Is it a school or something like that? So I hope, Ms. Wais, this explains the application process. If you are here, we don't need this money to be paid today, but please, there is a link, I think someone has here the link, become at least a member. You do the application, at least today, we should have your application. If we cannot even have your application, I don't know, probably we are wasting each other's time. So we are just asking you, just make the application, make the initial application. Then, little by little, you start investing with us. Yeah. Alright, so I see, I hope this has escaped a question. I don't see two.
Yes, yes. Sorry, sir, for interrupting. So from the table, it is clear that really you become more effective at 2,000 as a corporate member. And you have to pay really the 2,600, because the 100 is application, the 500 is membership, and then you have the 2,000. Can you hear me properly?
Yes, yeah, there's some feedback somewhere, but go ahead.
Yeah, so now the question is, at 2,000, the 2,000 quacha that you pay, is that, does that become like a contribution that is renewable? Or it is part of your investment?
It's not renewable, you pay it once, you become a member for life.
For life? So that 2,000 does not generate any interest or whatever it is? It is just a membership fee?
It does some dividends of about 6%, which is paid maybe sometimes. It's capped by government, by the way. Corporatives are not allowed to share more than 6%. That is on the membership. So it is capped at 6%. Whenever the board, including yourselves, the members, will declare a dividend, we can pay out a dividend. Having said that, that money is mainly used to generate more, to generate more money to run the cooperative. Remember, a cooperative is, as someone said, it's not a profit-making organization, so to say. Not a profit. It is there to provide a service. So for instance, we are talking about the remittance app. If we had the remittance app, all our members will say, there will be 50%. When they send money to Zambia, they all pay 50%. Nine members, they'll pay 100%. So we are providing a service. Why? Because you contributed 2,000 to the development of the app. So the 2,000, Ms. Wais, look at it as the money which is brought to the core app, mainly to generate benefits for the services, a lot of benefits. Say, I don't know, when we have a hospital one day in Zambia, you go at half percent. So it is there to generate a service and not a profit. However, if we make more money, we make more money. At one point, we can declare a dividend of, say, up to 6%. We have declared a dividend we are sharing. This is why now cooperatives have become more creative. That is where now your 20,000 comes in, when you invest in bonds. Because you put all that money, that is your money, we put it in the bank, and when that money comes, after a few deductions, we give you back your entire money. That is why cooperative, they were dying, so to say. Because that money, that 2,000, Ms. Wais, was not enough to run cooperative. So they were dying. They became more creative, they created what they call investment shares. And this is where you are going to see the portfolio for the bonds. Those who want to participate in real estate, you are going to fall under the investment shares. Yes?
Thank you very much, thank you very much, sir.
Does that satisfy you?
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Wais, are you okay?
Yes, very, very okay with it, thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you very much. Are there any other questions before we move to the final?
Thank you so much through the chair. I really appreciate the information you shared, it has encouraged me. But I had a question. You said that the bonds, they will mature after two years. You said you've been, you've been, this corp has been going on for about a year. So if someone joins like this, this month in February, would their bond mature after a year? The two years from the time you invest, or the two years from the time the corp was in?
Mr. Chair, do you want me to respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
We mentioned in our presentation that the bonds are invested on a monthly basis, not at the time you join. Because at the time you join, you have not invested in any government bonds. So what happens is, when you invest, for instance, in February, if it's government bonds, you get your coupon payment every six months. So February, the next coupon payment should be after six months, for a period of two years. We are investing in short-term bonds of two years. We are not doing the five years, the seven years, because we are planning on other bigger projects. So you only get your coupon payment every six months from the month that you invested. Thank you.
Okay, no, my question was, you said that after two years, that we are done, we move to bigger things, right? So what if next year you have someone again who joins? So that two years keeps extending for them? Or the people who joined earlier can re-invent one or two years? I don't know.
Yes, we did say that, we also mentioned that we will continue investing in bonds. We are not going to stop. We will continue investing in bonds as well for the near foreseeable future, because there's still money to be made from there. There will also be projects running on the side. So yes, a new member can invest today. The cooperative is an ongoing entity, it's a going concern. So we believe this will grow and we'll continue investing in different areas. So if people at the end of their period, two years, they want to get their money, that's absolutely fine. But there will be other bigger projects, like we mentioned in the presentation. So you get your money at maturity, but the coupon payment, which is every six months, will be given to you, to your bank account held in Zambia.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I think let's not overlook to say, every year, we need to pay that 500. That is yearly, if I understood well.
That's correct.
This are 2,600, you pay it once, but every year, we come to renew our membership. You pay 500 for the next year. Let's just take notes back on, thank you.
Thank you so much. I think, Ms. Kazetu, you need to come on board the leadership. We are coming to you next. Thank you so much for your help.
Then what happens if the 500? What happens if the following year, you don't pay that 500, but you had invested the original 2,000? What happens to that person? Is there a penalty or how do you handle it? Let me just pick it up.
Actually, we will be bringing, we will be bringing a resolution to the members, what we have seen other cooperatives do. Either they deduct from your current, say, if you have invested and you are getting your coupon. So before you get all your money, either we deduct from that. Meaning, we are going to look at other options, which we are going to bring to the members to vote and approve. Because again, this is a cooperative. So after you approve that, if it's a penalty, we agree with that as well. Maybe when it is due in January, you don't pay. After December, the treasurer will start saying, will charge you. It's just an example. The treasurer, the board says, they will propose, you pay 50, 50 quacha every month. Your money is owing. So maybe that will make us, but again, you are going to vote as members. You are going to vote and say, "Okay, I think we like this penalty or we like this resolution." We'll bring it forward to you. Thank you, we are discussing that one.
And just as everybody is getting into this waggon, let's take it upon ourselves to say, we don't need somebody to push you, or my treasurer, to start chasing you to say, "No, pay, pay, pay."
Thank you.
For me to come and join, that means I have to remind myself to say, for example, next year, we put it to say, maybe by 10th of January, everybody would have paid that membership. So that, happy that 10th, you pay the penalty, it ends. The open it field, collect, deduct, number, which is, come on, join. Come on, we got more bonds, we got more shares.
Thank you so much, thank you so much, thank you for that.
Yeah. Yeah, but like we said, we'll bring everything to the vote and all the members agree. I told you, we agree on this. But again, thank you. I talk it, we agree on this, but again, thank you so much for your.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman.
And the.
Mr. Chairman, is there somebody else, uh, who, who wants to ask a question?
Yes, there is the David and the, uh, Ms. Muntong.
Okay, I have a comment after that, there's a lady who wants to say something, I'd like to say on her behalf, so, but go ahead with the two people.
Okay, but David, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much, I hope you can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, okay, this is Dr. Nalisa David, uh, currently in China, but based in TCH Zambia. Uh, one, uh, thing I'd like to, uh, commend this team for the transparency and, uh, the openness as well as, you know, the warmth in the way you are responding to issues. Uh, yes, the way you're interacting among yourselves and the way you're interacting to the, uh, to the members to come, just like Niho's, was already decided. All right, and another thing I'd like to ask is that, uh, uh, the contacts that have been provided, some links that are being sent, that if you want to get into IT, communicate to this and that, that some people who may find difficulties in, uh, capturing these links, would you allow for people to send their email, their email addresses or phone number, whatever, through the chat box if it's possible, uh, kind of advice, thank you.
Thank you so much, doctor, uh, would like to know you, uh, better, so please inbox and leave your name. We very much appreciate your comment, uh, who is the next, is that answer your question, doctor?
Precisely.
Uh, precisely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, uh, please, uh, share some emails, Dr. Dr. Um, Nalisa is asking, we share, uh, you, you can send your email, yes, please put in your email in the chat box and we'll get that.
Your contact, thank you so much for your comments, stay in China, stay blessed. Uh, Mr. Chairman, who is next?
Ms. Muntonga.
Okay, Ms. Muntonga over to you.
Okay, thank you, good afternoon, everybody, I'd just like to thank, um, continue to appreciate, uh, all of us, actually, I think we all need to step up and help out. But what I wanted to say to, to the new members is that, you know, uh, at some point, we need to, to do our own research. If you feel like you're on the fence, and if you've been on the fence, I know there are some members who started, the people who started off with us right from the beginning, when we started the, the meetings, but they're still on the fence, do your research. I see Ms. Mukunkela here, I don't know if she's the same one. I, I watched her YouTube, she, she explains bonds so well, I watch her videos, she explains anything financial related in Zambia extremely well for the layman. What I wanted to say is that, let's do our research so that we can feel confident about be moving, you know, taking the next step to become part of it. And like what other people have said, you keep on waiting, waiting, and then later on, ten years, five years down the line, you start wishing you had joined us, it's still, that's what I'm saying. But if you feel like, like you need more information, take it upon yourselves to research. Watch videos of, uh, I know that there are a number of Zambians who have YouTube channels where they talk about financial, financial related things in Zambia, so that you can gain the confidence. So when you're coming on board, you know exactly what you're stepping into. And then another thing I would like to address is, somebody on our membership chat had mentioned the voices on the, that we use on our ads. The first time I heard, I actually heard the first one, I also wondered, I'm like, hmm, them songo yo. I thought this is for Zambians, uh, and, okay, I know we have friends of Zambia and we might have, uh, Zambians who are, you know, of the other persuasion, but, uh, it would be wonderful to just hear a Zambian voice, since we're trying to encourage other Zambians in the diaspora as well as back home to be part of this. Because if I wasn't part of this group and I listened to one of those videos, I'd be like, but why is them songo telling us what to do? Yeah, that, that, those are just my thoughts. But thank you very much, everybody, let's keep on going, we are relatively new, we are learning and I do appreciate the work that goes in, especially when it comes to the IT. If, ev- every aspect of this takes a lot of work and, um, I, I myself am going to be involved, uh, I've already talked to somebody, so I'll do my best, yeah.
Thank you.
So that's.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for mentioning, uh, Ms. Mukunki, she's here and we are definitely going to reach out to her.
Yeah.
She's a superstar, I was watching all her videos last night, actually. Uh, so Ms. Mukunki, say hello, um, you are doing a wonderful, wonderful job. One of the things, again, we are saying at Global Running, corporate center in daylight, we are watching. Um, the bonds, the majority of our bonds, I don't know, Ms. Mukunki, who agree with me, uh, foreign, foreign, foreign investors, I, I've come again, they are taking, they, 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 they carry two dollar in our country, it's going, uh, through, through the bond.
Mr. Chair.
In the meantime, we are on there.
Let me, let me just interrupt, I'd like to thank all of you, um, this group is doing things. This is the first time I'm looking into your meeting and I'm so amazed. And that's why I'm just quiet and just listening and watching all of you talk. I mean, this is something, something that is really commendable, um, I've loved all your presentations and I would like to agree with the doctor from, who's based in China. Your transparency also is brilliant, like, it's not a false scheme, many people are afraid of, of these groups because they think they are not real, but you can see the reality in what you're, you're trying to achieve. Really love to be part of it, so, in brief, I talk too much, let me just.
Yeah, yeah, no, you, you are welcome, my sister, you, you are welcome, um, yeah. Uh, again, we, like, uh, what the director said, we are celebrating the first payout and a lot of our people, you, you have already received your, your commande, my commande, my commande went into my bank, I was so happy. I don't even want to touch it, I treasure that, uh, capital investment so much. Uh, so a lot of our people have started receiving their, their money, so we are very, very grateful. Thank you, Ms. Mukunki, for that, thank you.
Right, I have several things to say and thank you for the encouragement from all the presentation, the, the comments in the, in the, in the chat and everything that's going on. I have a question from our very own, uh, Lotilda, uh, if somebody invests, uh, two or three years in bulk or something like that, uh, is that possible? Two or three years lumped in? So you can answer that.
Miss Lotilda doesn't want to be, to be bothered with, uh, one fine. My treasure has said, right, you pay three, five, that's the confidence you have, you know, cooperative, my treasure, what do you think?
Yeah, that's true, yeah, we can do that.
Okay, okay, uh, my next question is from, uh, uh, sorry, Theresa Walia. We have a, a, a person who is doing marketing, we'll just give a round of applause for that, she's doing marketing. Theresa Walia, thank you very much for joining, we'll get in touch with you with our co-chair. We need all hands on board, we are so grateful that you are, uh, actually doing the participatory thing of what a member of the corp should be doing, thank you so much, we are, we're really appreciating. We will contact you shortly afterwards and then, uh, thank you for the comments on the voices on the videos, I think that is subject to change, that, uh, that point has been taken note of, agreed. Um, and also, I think that's it. Is, are there any other questions, I can see three questions in the chat, Mr. Chairman, can you attend to that?
Uh, there are no other question, uh, you become a full member with the first two, we encourage you to invest. I think it's just a comment, uh, unless someone can see a question, I can't see a question. Land is becoming unreachable, can we do something before we get, uh, get it expensive? Uh, yes, yes, definitely, definitely, yeah, no, so the, but I just comments which are there, you can go ahead, moderator.
Okay, that, being said, I have no further, um, questions except for the video, if that one, if that's, um, uh, Mr. Derek Chivilu wants to show that, we can go ahead and do the video. If there are any other questions, feel free, I think, uh, what was remaining, Mr. Chairman, was for you to, to list the board of directors.
Correct.
People want to know who to contact, who to communicate with. Um, I would encourage everyone to communicate with everyone until we streamline this whole thing. But, you know, I, I have no, I, I don't have the authority to say that, I'm, I'm superseding the chairman, but, but go ahead.
Yeah, let me, let me share the, uh, the, the vi- not the video, uh, to show the, the leadership, uh, so you know us. If you want, the screen is loading, okay, so the board of directors, we have ten, uh, board of, uh, directors. Uh, my name is Roger Chai, I'm the chairperson, I am in Alberta in Canada. Uh, today is nice and warm, minus four, so it's not bad. Uh, Ms. Margaret Chaparoko, she's the vice chair and secretary, I, I, uh, she is in Texas. Mr. Elas Munguala is the treasurer, is in the UK. Ms. Jia Chimba, uh, trustee, she's in the UK, Ms. Louise, uh, Chiawetan, she's in the UK, but she lives in Seattle, Washington, the US, Ms. Patricia Kamanga, uh, she's a trustee. Mr. Derek Chivilu is a trustee, Mr. Darius Mulenga, trustee, and Ms. Emily Mulenga, um. Uh, all these, oh, I forgot, I, I forgot one person here, is, um, Mr. Nundi in the Australia. We have Mr. Nundi in, in Australia, apologies for that. So if you want to get, uh, in touch with the, any one of us, uh, those are the, are the, are the people who, who comprise the, the board. Yeah.
Yes, so, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I think all contact, uh, documents, like application forms are available. Um, all you have to do is just reach out, I think, uh, Mr. Chairman has posted a few documents there online. If there's an application that needs to be done, go into the application right now and submit it. At least that puts you in the queue and it gives a commitment, it shows responsibility and a commitment to say, I'm here, I want to become a member of Global. So we thank you so much, without any further ado, I have nothing left to say, I'm going to hand over the program to Mr. Chairman to finish off. Thank you so much for coming, it's been such a pleasure to have all of you, thank you.
Okay, well, well, I asked you have a question, a comment you need to make?
Yeah, just a comment to all our members, I just want to encourage you, like, uh, the chair had already posted on the groups, once you make your payment, please, please send us a copy of the payment. Um, either to the email or to, if you know the treasurer's number or the finance team, please send us copies so that we can allocate the payment. We've had some instances where people have transferred the money into our MTN or Airtel Zambian account. Unfortunately, once you send that money, wh- when it's received on the Zambian site, it doesn't show the sender. It only gives the reference number and the amount. We've spoken to MTN and Airtel, they've refused to do that for security reasons. So you can only tell by a reference number. So once you transfer the money to our Airtel or MTN, uh, send us copies, please, even the bank. For the bank, we are checking the statement, we usually see this, but I would encourage you to send us copies of proof of payment, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Nusiku's question, uh, not sure if this question has been, does one need a bank account in Zambia to participate? The answer is the yes and no, I guess. No, for you to send the money, you can send from your bank here. However, for you to receive your, your interest, for us to pay you back, we need, uh, a, a bank account in Zambia. Otherwise, if we send, uh, a, a wire transfer, you lose quite a bit. Uh, so, uh, it is up to you, if you don't want a bank account in Zambia, but treasure, you can agree with me or, or not on there. You want the money to be sent here and you incur the, the losses, you incur the expenses, it is up to you. But to receive the money, we are encouraging people to open a Zambian account.
Yeah, um, actually, you're right, Mr. Chair, in Zambia, uh, to transfer money to, uh, international bank accounts, they charge twenty-five dollar, um, minimum of one percent or twenty-five dollars, whichever is, um, is lower. So if you, the amount you are sending is a small amount, even hundred quacha, they will charge you twenty-five dollars, so think about that.
Yeah. But if you, again, if you are getting, uh, uh, a coupon payment of hundred thousand or so, then it can be covered, I guess. It's can be, can be, can be covered, yeah. So, um, for you to invest, do you need a bank account in Zambia? No, for you to receive money, you may need a bank account, uh, in, in Zambia. All right, uh, before we play our last video.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, can you please post, can somebody please post the link for the application form? Somebody is asking for it on the chat, is that possible? Do you have it?
Uh, yes, we can pull.
Uh, can you repost it? Can you repost, please, application for, um, for membership?
For membership.
Dr. Nalisa, it's coming to you right now on the chat, there it is. I've got your number and I will communicate to you, Dr. Dr. Luwasi, thank you so much.
And we will make the, after the Zoom is processed, we'll make the video available in the members, the, uh, group and in, in Telegram. I see a question about people who came a little bit late. Yeah, so if we don't have any further questions, we would like to thank you, uh, for joining this Zoom meeting. Uh, they've all been well attended of, of late. Uh, we, um, we are going to be having Zoom meeting every month because of new members. Uh, they need to come, we answer some, 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 some questions. Uh, so we are going full force, uh, this year, at the end of this year, with your help, we want to reach one thousand Zambian, uh, at home and here in the diaspora who can make a payment. Uh, that is our goal, meaning every month, we need to bring in at least one hundred. And one hundred is nothing, if sixty-eight of us here can only bring one more member, that's it. One more member, we, we, we are going to, so it is not a very, an attainable, attainable goal. And we'll be on our goal to, to claim what belongs to us, ladies and gentlemen, Zambia is a rich country. We only need to do something ourselves. And with that, we are going to play our last video. Um, our last video from our checkman and we will say goodbye. Thank you so much, everyone, uh, for attending. Uh, we are saying that we should, uh, kuku mukulapanchi, please, let's be part of what, what we are doing, we want to do, we want to do big things back home. Thank you, over to you, brother, thank you, moderator, for a good job, uh, you, you have done today.
Welcome to Global.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and everybody.
Thank you.
Part of our new members onboarding process. The board and management have prepared this welcome information package to give you an overview of who we are, what we do, what we stand for, your expectations and your benefits as a member of this cooperative. First, we are going to start by giving you a brief history of the Global Multipurpose Cooperative Society. Now, let us look at an overview of the history of Global Multipurpose Cooperative Society. At Global Multipurpose Cooperative Society, we help our members build investments. Global Multipurpose Cooperative Society was solely created for investing the funds received from Zambians at home and abroad for projects that are income generating for the members and job creation for our communities. The investment will be in products described below and in either of the two ways. As a direct investor in a project such as the construction of housing units or as an umbrella fund, investing in companies with viable projects. Next, we want to tell you about what we do. Global Multipurpose Cooperative Society is an investment vehicle set up by Zambians at home and abroad to promote the interests of all its members to attain their social, cultural and economic betterment and is wholly owned by Zambians with a strong financial backing from Zambians living abroad to mitigate some of the impediments mentioned above, especially the shortage of financial capital to facilitate selected development programs. At this point, we would like to tell you about our approach. Global Co-opus' vision is to unlock capital from Zambians living at home and abroad to support the development of Zambia while generating wealth for the members. Because the larger participation and membership are Zambians. Because the larger participation and membership are Zambians. Global Multipurpose Cooperative Society is fully registered in Zambia with the Registrar of Societies for Ease of Business. The registration in Zambia is in the form of a cooperative to allow for the mass participation of local Zambians and at the same time benefits from the new government investment incentives that are aimed at rejuvenating the economy. By the way, did we also mention that our bank accounts are at Stambik Bank Zambia Milungushi branch? Now let us look at what our mission is. The business opportunity is to set up an investment vehicle in the form of a cooperative that will invest in projects in selected high social impact areas of the Zambian economy. We also want to tell you about membership and membership shares. An individual may become a member of the cooperative by submitting an application with a non-refundable fee of one hundred kwacha and paying a non-refundable annual membership fee of five hundred kwacha or thirty dollars and purchasing ten membership shares at two hundred kwacha. Membership shares will amount to ten multiplied by two hundred kwacha, which equals to two thousand kwacha. This amount is non-refundable. Members will have a period of twelve months to complete the payment of membership shares. A member will not be considered a full member until the full membership shares are paid for. A member in good standing is entitled to all the rights, benefits and privileges of membership and to stand for any elected office in the cooperative. Members can also be involved in the cooperative by working on committees, promoting the work of the cooperative and through other community activities to remain in good standing. A member must abide by the bylaws of the cooperative and any other policies the cooperative may establish from time to time. The period for becoming a member is open-ended. Now it is time to talk about where you can find important documents. You can find important documents on our website at www dot globalcoopasambia dot com. Once on the website, go to the documents tab where you will find the cooperative's bylaws, membership agreement and the most recent annual report. Please take time to acquaint yourself with these important documents by reading through. You will also find important contacts, links and relevant information to the cooperative. As a new member, the admin will create an account for you on the Zoho platform. You will receive an email containing your login credentials. Your first order of business is to finish setting up your profile by filling out the forms on the Zoho platform and upload the required documents. You are required to upload three documents to stay in compliance with money laundering laws. Acceptable government-issued documents include a national registration card, a driver's license, a passport. You also required to upload a passport-sized photo and a utility bill. Global Multipurpose Cooperative Society is required by law to remind members to have these documents on file. Finally, now that you are a paid member of Global Multipurpose Cooperative Society, there are a lot of ways that you can get involved in a cooperative. From running for a position on the board to volunteering at fundraisers, you can also support the cooperative in a variety of roles. It's important for you to get involved. Remember, don't just talk about it, do it. Start by asking yourself, what do I bring to the cooperative and how do I get engaged? And if you have any questions, just email us at info at globalcoopasambia dot com. Welcome aboard and congratulate you on completing the onboarding process for Global Multipurpose Cooperative Society. Now, let's get to rolling and help our members build investments.